Item number three, which is the design work around one-to-one digital transformation. I turn it over to, who's the lead, Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Good afternoon. I'm joined today by Ellen Mukai, manager of School Based Technology Specialist, Mary Beth Loveglass, Assistant Superintendent, Information Technology; Dr. Sloan Presidio, Assistant Superintendent IS; and Dr. Duran, Chief Academic Officer. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity this afternoon to share with you our design work and thinking around how we can create and provide greater access to and use of contemporary and effective technology, resources, and tools within FCPS. By the way, that is what our desired outcome in the strategic plan states as well. Today's presentation is about sharing with you some of the bigger planning ideas we have and how we start to go about doing this work at a systemic level. I'm going to remind you, manage your expectations, that we are at the very beginning stages of this systemic, multi-year work. At this point in time, we don't have all the answers and all the plans, as there is still much to learn, much to glean, and gather as we move forward. What we do know, and we've certainly heard this loud and clear from other districts that we've studied and talked to as well, and Ellen will reference a little bit of this later on in the presentation, is that simply infusing more technology without careful consideration for what we expect teachers and students to actually do is a mistake, and we're not going to make that. The reason that this desired outcome is in the student success portion of our strategic plan is because we believe the focus of this work has everything to do with teaching and learning. And to be successful in our work, we'll need to not only address instructional practice and digital resources, student and teacher skills around instruction and digital resources, but also leadership, parent and community support, infrastructure, finances, and professional development. We have teams of stakeholders planning this work right now in each of the areas, which, again, Ellen will highlight a little bit later on in the presentation. And while you see the, you'll see in the presentation today, there is much work that stretches across different parts of our organization, the different departments within our system, I do want to emphasize again that the ultimate reason that we want to provide greater, more consistent, and equitable access to contemporary and effective technology, resources, and tools is simply to support student achievement, including making progress with achievement gaps that we recognize we need continued focus on. Another important point worth emphasizing as we begin down this path is that we know technology will never replace an effective teacher, and we will never intend it to. We continue to need our teachers to provide direct, explicit instruction to our students to support their success. But we also know that technology used by an effective teacher has the capability of enhancing instruction, engaging the learner in new and different ways, and bringing a world of resources right to our classroom, to the learner, and into our schools in FCPS. While we have many teachers in schools already effectively utilizing technology in the classroom, we desire a systemic, consistent, and equitable approach to ensuring that all of our students and teachers in all of our schools have those same opportunities. We believe the work is necessary. With an effective teacher utilizing effective tools, we further support the development of critical thinking, analytical skills, collaboration, communication, all important components of our Portrait of a Graduate. In a moment, we're going to share a short video to sort of kick off the presentation that illustrates some ways in which we envision technology being used across our system to enhance and improve what we do. I'd ask you not to be listening for the words of "technology" or "devices" or "one-to-one", because that's not the purpose of the video. You probably won't hear those words. Rather, the video isn't so much about devices or hardware, but focuses squarely on the kinds of teaching and learning we're emphasizing as important to us in our strategic plan. The same kind of strategies that allow students to develop those attributes that we've defined in Portrait of a Graduate. The technology you'll see students accessing in the video serves as a valuable tool in a teacher's toolkit. It's carefully selected to effectively enhance instruction, engage learners, and provide increased access to resources to help students solve problems, research topics, collaborate with others, and communicate their ideas, just to name a few. You'll also see that students don't always have computers in front of them, and they're also taking advantage of traditional learning opportunities as well. It's this blend of important teacher-directed and led instruction accompanied by a contemporary and accessible set of resources that help to solidify learning experiences that we seek for all students in all of our schools. Near the end of the presentation, we'll outline our first phase of work in this area of the strategic plan. The first phase is important, as it allows us the opportunity to continue to learn, refine, refine, adjust, and better inform us of our systemic needs as we move the work forward. While we recognize our current realities as it relates to budgets and funding, we also know we can't sit still in working toward improvement. However, I want to be clear, we're not here today to ask for funding. We are currently examining ways to mitigate costs in our first phase of work through reprioritization of existing funds and creative solutions to support the important work we want to move forward. Again, our first phase of work is needed to better inform important logistics, and that'll be critical to our success moving forward as we develop plans and next steps. As a final note, I'll say to you that none of us are really all that crazy about the calling this work "digital transformation," so we're going to use that as a placeholder. We currently have engaged a group of students to help us put, in their words, what this kind of teaching and learning initiative means to them, and we hope to be able to share that with you shortly. So with that, a little precursor, I will hand it back over to Ellen Mukai.
Thank you so much, Captain.
The model that we have right now for traditional education is really old. It's very antiquated. Our society doesn't fit into that package anymore. This type of traditional education doesn't meet the needs of the jobs we have now or can have in the future. I think we've seen a huge shift in society because a lot of the jobs that were typically referred to as unskilled are no longer available, or they're not high-paying. And so, one thing that we're trying to do is prepare them for an environment, one, that already is different, and two, we don't really know what it's going to look like when they graduate.
Because our world is shifting, and our world is changing. You know, we hear all the time, "We're preparing our students for jobs that don't even exist." So if we're preparing them for these jobs that don't exist, what do we tell them to do? We work on developing their skills, their ability to problem-solve, for problems that we don't even know yet. We are preparing them to think creatively. Our Portrait of a Graduate initiative, you talk about the skills that we want for our students as they leave our schools and graduate, critical thinking. That global awareness piece, the brilliancy piece, it goes hand-in-hand, and I see that correlation there.
So inquiry-based learning really does step away from the traditional sit in the classroom, take notes, and then regurgitate that information on a test. No longer do we need learners that know everything and can memorize information. What they have, they have every resource and every bit of information at their fingertips. And what we need to do now is transform that learning so that students know what to do with that information, how do they solve problems with that information. What we're doing now with inquiry-based learning is we're giving students problems, we're giving them the tools, and then giving them the creativity to come up with a solution together. So it does really pull together all of those things that we look for with the Portrait of a Graduate.
And that's the big difference between the traditional style and the inquiry-based model. Figure out what you know, figure out what you don't know, figure out what you need to know to solve this problem. In the past, solving an equation has been, here's an equation, solve it, find the value of x. With this model, what you can do instead is say, okay, here, you're a business owner now. This is the situation that you're dealing with. Here are your sales from the past three months, here are your expenses from the past three months. Go ahead and make a model for me that shows what you're running into. They're thinking about, hey, well, this actually has purpose. There's a reason why I would need this information.
You're really looking at multiple skill development for the student, is their ability to ask good questions, to gather that question and analyze, and synthesize, and kind of put everything together to make it make sense for themselves, and then be able to translate that information back to others.
The big difference in the way that I function is that I guide the kids through what our objective is, and they need to do the searching, rather than I tell them, "This is what you need to learn, remember this, I'm testing you on this." We have an objective, we have one focus, and the children, the students, work to really inquire, "What is this about?" and how it makes sense to them.
I just went back after six years of being out of the school. What was amazing when I walked into the classroom is I didn't know where the front of the classroom was, right? Because there wasn't a teacher that they needed to face and get that information from. And I think that's a great metaphor for what's happening throughout the country. What will happen very soon is the focus is no longer on what the teacher is doing in the classroom, it's how the teacher is helping students to do some pretty good.
Really about a student-centered environment, really about putting the learning back in their hands. So you see more collaboration with those kids in the classroom, you see more leadership from them versus the teacher. You see the teacher really serving as a facilitator, helping to guide the learning in the classroom. Then from there, oh, you can go in so many different ways to really get those students to take charge of their own learning. It's wonderful.
Through access to the internet and other devices, the whole world is at my comms. I can do my research on any subject. I would like any subject that's pertinent to me.
I see the kids are excited, as long as they have that choice. And that's one of the things that we talk about, like, you always have a choice, how do you want to go about this?
With personalized learning, you can change the pace of instruction, the place of instruction, and the path that they use to show their mastery. And so, as a teacher, one thing you want to do is find that balance between personalizing instruction, which we all agree on is good, but also finding opportunities where they can collaborate and mentor each other, and communicate with each other in meaningful ways about what they're learning. And I think when you find that balance, that's when the magic in the classroom happens.
Some students just came up with different ideas about the problem that was presented to them that I didn't even think about. That's huge, just the students being able to get that chance to work with each other and share their ideas. And that's what I want for my son. I want him to be able to take information and come up with a solution to the problem, and not just sit there and wait for somebody to show him how to solve it.
As a parent, it is my expectation that the school does prepare my students with the traditional skills of reading, writing, and arithmetic, but also that they provide them the skills to be successful in the world today. And that does go beyond reading, writing, and arithmetic, to make them a better citizen in society, and to be prepared for whatever the workforce will be when they're there in seven years. It allows this layer of independence on their part to own their own learning, and I think that just is such an exciting concept.
And so, we're really at a place now in education where we have begun to realize that not only do we have to help students master content, as the last quote came, but also master skills. We want our students to be collaborators and critical and creative thinkers, and have all these skills that will have them ready to enter the world of worker college. And so, we, I'm going to go ahead and click that, I'll get used to this in a second. So we know that we have students who have these needs, and we want to have them ready. And so, in Fairfax County, we're getting ready to start with this multi-year transformation where we're going to really provide a more equitable education so that all students have a chance to use technology, these digital resources that are available, to be better This is part of our strategic plan, and I want to reference, the first goal is Goal One, Student Success, and is really speaking to making sure that not only our students and teachers have access, but also our parents, to these digital resources. As you can see, one of the tasks is also providing access to a device for every child in Fairfax. The second one is from Karen Culture, and it talks about the need for digital citizenship. We know that we can't just give devices and access to students without helping them remember and learn how to be respectful, responsible, and safe online. And so, that's also a part of this work that we're starting. If we're successful, it's going to be very exciting. Our teachers are going to adopt new instructional models that will really allow for students to ask and answer questions, this inquiry-based approach, where students might be more engaged in project-based learning or problem-based learning. We know that that in itself should increase academic achievement. We'll have more academic conversations, students will also develop more communication and collaboration skills through this work, and so better enable the attributes of Portrait of a Graduate. I want to be clear, oftentimes when school districts start off on this venture, there are some misconceptions. And so, we are not trying to replace teachers in any way. In fact, they will still have just as an important role as ever in our classrooms as we embark on this journey. The other thing I want to make sure that you recognize is that we're not expecting teachers to assign tasks where kids would sit in front of a screen all day. Instead, we expect the device to aid in their learning, and it would be used as appropriate, both developmentally for our young students, maybe they wouldn't use it quite as often as our high school students. So we have some technology in Fairfax, and some of our teachers already use these approaches to learning. So what are our current realities? Right now, we have, I believe some successes that we have are that our teachers have begun to adopt these practices in the classroom, and I think you might have just seen some of that in the video that we just showed you. Students are getting a chance to both use devices and take on projects, or community service projects inside and outside of school, that allow them to build these skills that are in Portrait of a Graduate. The other thing that I think we've done well so far is that kids have a lot of devices and digital tools they can use every day. They already have access at home, many of them, so that they can continue their learning there. The teacher can post assignments, parents and kids can log on, take a look, extend their learning, or practice some more. Another strength we have right now is that we do have an infrastructure that supports this. We have network that allows for the access to the internet. We also have many, many devices that are supported, and if they break, they can be And we have some challenges right now, too. One of them is that we don't have consistency across our schools, or even across classrooms. Some schools have lots and lots of devices, and others don't. And so, that's something that we really want to work to correct in the near future. The other thing that is a challenge is that we don't have common expectations for technology use across the schools and from classroom to classroom. Different teachers think they're integrating technology in different ways, and it looks different. What we want to do is really bring some consistency to that, so that across the division, everyone would know what technology integration looks like in an instructional setting. Yet another challenge is sustainable funding, and I'll speak to this a little bit more later, but we really need to think about how we can refresh devices over time. And finally, we know that not all of our students have access at home, and that might be because they don't have internet access. Another reason is they might have siblings who also need to use the device the family Let's take a walk back in time. FCPS is not new to technology. In fact, we started with laptops in the early 2000s. We had an elementary laptop initiative where every single elementary teacher got a laptop to use on their own. Additionally, the classroom got four laptop computers, and that was kind of like a center-based instruction area. High school and middle school teachers said, "Hey, that's not fair." And so, the division, of course, granted that to them as well. We also began to suggest, and even later recommended through policy, that every teacher have an FCPS 24/7 account for their classroom, so that students could continue to learn at home with their families. Later on, we realized the need to put all of our curriculum online, and so through eCard and Horizon, teachers could then access a variety of resources to present material to students and also to assess them. It was during this time period that principals began to think, huh, this looks pretty good. And teachers began to say to their principals, "I want more devices." And so, principals started looking to local school funds to support the purchase of many additional laptops. And of course, here's the access for parents to 24/7. Most recently, we've begun to adopt online textbooks. We have encouraged students to bring their own devices, so that if the school doesn't have a machine for them regularly, they can continue to use that tool as they need to. We've adopted Google Apps for Education, which has allowed for much more collaboration online. And then finally, this year, we have access to the gradebook for our families. So these are all things that have happened over time, they're all things that we've learned from along the way, and things that we are excited to continue into the future. We've also done some research within Fairfax County Public Schools, and there are several different, there's many, and here are a few. We've, in 2012, 2013, stoned middle school pilot, a tablet pilot. And so, every seventh grader on a particular team got a tablet, it was connected to the internet, they could take it from school to home and back again. And this year, we have several schools that are exploring the use of Chromebooks. Once again, students can take these devices home, they're connecting to the internet. Global Classroom at Centerville Elementary School, all of these were opportunities for us to work with our schools, our teachers, and our communities to find out what works, what doesn't work, and really refine our practice. Here's some things that we learned. Just because you think students like computers doesn't mean they always like having them in school all day, every day. And so, what we found was that really it's what the teacher asks the student to do that is most critical. And so, when students were asked to think at higher levels through the use of the technology, then it really helped them to be more engaged. The other thing that we learned is sometimes we have to consider how we're going to connect these devices, and sometimes there were issues or challenges with getting them on the wireless, which allowed us to refine our practice. So we've been looking at these different opportunities with one-to-one to learn. The other one at the bottom is Innovation Institute, and every year, teachers have an opportunity to write action research plans, where they ask a question, they make a proposal, where they get technology to aid and support of that question, and then they collect research along the way. And so, once again, we continue to work with them to study what they're learning. So we've learned within, and we've also learned outside of Fairfax County Public Schools. We've been looking at other divisions for some time. Our near neighbor, Baltimore County Public Schools, started going one-to-one about two years ago, and at that point, they had never had any technology before, so they started from scratch. So they have some different outcomes than what we might have later on, but we'll get there later. Henrico is another place where we've had educators visit the school here to begin looking at how they went one-to-one. Morrisville, North Carolina, is another place that we've sent some folks from Fairfax to study and learn. What we've found within each of those divisions is that people, it's really essential that we don't focus on the device, that we focus on the learning first, because over time, the research indicates that if you just pass out the devices, there is no increase in academic achievement, and it's not a worthy cause. Teaming for Transformation process, this was an opportunity that some folks in Fairfax had to work with 20 other school divisions, all of whom were planning to go to one-to-one. And they did some design work and discovered that there are really eight guiding design principles, and these divisions worked through them together to think that, what would this look like if we were to try to have a digital transformation in our school district? And so, these were the guiding design principles that came out of that work from that process. And we're going to spend some time looking at each one. As Dr. Lockhart said, we do have groups that are working on each aspect of our plan right now, and so we'll cover each of these areas. First of all, we know that it is critical that our school leaders are able to articulate and talk about what we want to do with these devices, and what we want to do in the classroom to make our learning deeper for our students. We also want to make sure that they have that clear understanding of what technology integration looks like, so that those common expectations across classrooms and across schools can truly happen, and that's how we'll get to that access and equity that we so desire. I know that another essential guiding principle is student skills, and we identified ours a few years ago. In addition to the attributes of Portrait of a Graduate, we also want to make sure that digital citizenship skills are added to this list. We know that providing these devices will give students more access, and we really do want to make sure that they are ready to use them appropriately. Currently, we have digital citizenship classes for teachers, and we also hope that we can begin to educate our broader community in regards to this work. We know that the work, we've been sending devices, and been thinking about moving the teacher from the front of the classroom to supporting students through inquiry-based approaches, might be something that our families aren't used to just yet. And so, we really want to make sure that we have a dialogue with families. And in fact, back in 2012, 2013, there were a series of community meetings. There were 11 sites we visited, and about 200 families came out to learn more about this work and what it might look like in Fairfax County Public Schools. Additionally, we have a question in our Speak Up survey that we have annually, and one of them was asking, "What value do you believe instructional technology brings to the classroom?" Or, "Do you believe it's important?" was actually the question. And 80% of our families said they believed it was important, or very important, to have technology in our classrooms. Oh, community support. We believe it's really important to engage our community through business partnerships. We hope that we might provide both additional internet access and also relevant and authentic partnerships for project-based learning. When we think about digital resources, we begin to think about, what are those resources that teachers have access to on a regular basis? And so, we want to make sure that we provide an integrated learning management system that makes it easy to pull all of these resources together in one place. Teachers don't have to send kids to one website here and to another website there, but hopefully really bring it all in one place so that it's easy to package, and teachers and students and families can find it easily. We also know that we want to develop an online portfolio system so that students will have a chance, over time, to reflect on their work. They can look at both their past and their present level of performance and reflect on, "How did I get here? How did I learn this?" And finally, we want to make sure that we are developing and delivering the resources that are aligned to standards, and really make it easy for teachers to get this out Another guiding design principle is infrastructure. So, as you know, the goal is to make sure every child has access to the device when they need it, and in addition to that, to have models of support in place so that the internet's available, and that if a device is broken, then it can be repaired quickly and get this child back in line with their learning. As I said earlier, if you don't change your instructional practice, just handing the devices may not have the bang for your buck that you're hoping for. And so, a big part of this work will be helping our teachers best learn to use these devices in a way that is meaningful. How can they provide students more feedback or additional opportunities for learning? In fact, what the research shows us is that some of the first steps teachers take that have the greatest academic outcomes are around feedback. Teachers are more often giving students feedback online as they are in higher grades. The other thing is, there's more communication with teachers at that time. Finally, I'm going to go ahead and do the next one. Finance. We know that we need to have sustainable, equitable funding for our schools in regards to these digital tools. I referenced earlier, when we did the Elementary Laptop Initiative, that- I referenced earlier, when we did the elementary laptop initiative, that every classroom was given four laptops. And those schools that had a community that supported, the principals were able to engage the PTA and really think about, hey, we really want to try to go one-to-one. And so there's a lot of local school funding that helps support this. And what we'd like to do is think about how we might begin to shift some instructional monies or reallocate our current funding model so that we could better support schools in making this happen. As I said, we want it to be sustainable. And so there's a lot of places where we might begin to think about, how are you going to pay for devices? Or how are you going to pay for helping teachers learn how to do this work? We really believe that looking at the instructional supply allocation and rethinking how we might use those monies is our best option. We're just beginning to explore that because we're in the beginning of this work. The other thing that we want to explore is the use of a technology user fee. And this is something that has been done by other districts that have done this work. And it means that we might say, alright, families, we'd like you to pay $70 for your child to have access to a computer during the school year, and this would also cover the cost of repair or insure the device for if it was to be lost. So that's something else that we're hoping to try out and see what, how it goes. We do know that professional development will be a component of this work. We want to help our principals and administrators think about change management and how you really begin to integrate these types of changes. We know that our teachers will deepen their understanding in inquiry-based approaches, project-based, problem-based learning, as well as the use of a tool for technology. And finally, I believe that we can really effectively use our school-based technology specialists in our schools to make this happen. So, to be clear, we have a position in our schools called School-Based Technology Specialists, whose job it is to help teachers integrate technology into their classrooms. It might be that they model a lesson for teachers. It could be that they co-teach with a teacher. Or it could just be that they know what technologies best align with a given curriculum area and support getting those integrated. So those are a lot of design principles. Here's the big summary, right? Well, here's what we really hope to do. We want to adopt these instructional models for blended learning that gives students more time to learn, where they can learn at their own, at their home, in school, online, in class. We want to provide resources that support this approach to teachers so that teachers and students can work face-to-face or in a setting away from school. And we know that we want to support our students, parents, and educators in understanding what is available so that students can continue to learn. And last, we want to design those funding models that are sustainable for this work. And so we do have exciting plans for the fall where we are going to implement this in a pyramid in Fairfax County Public Schools. We also, so when I say pyramid, elementary, middle, and high, is what our plans are. And in addition to that, we have five high schools that are a part of the e-Learning Backpack Virginia Department of Education grant. We will also be including, we will also be working with them, support them in that initiative. And so we have project teams that are working on each of those design principles so that in the fall, we can support the schools in these areas. So, as we began to think about the pyramid that we'd like to work with, we knew that we needed to have a process in place. And so we did ask school pyramids to apply collaboratively together, to present to us what they believe their vision for teaching and learning would be in an inquiry-based approach using devices and digital tools. We also wanted to make sure that they not only understood the pedagogy, but they had some understanding of how to implement the devices already. So we looked at their application usage and began to say, well, they're already using FCPS 24/7, or they're already using Google Apps for Education. So, okay, it seems like they're going to be ready. And the last thing we did is we asked the schools to survey their teachers. Are you committed to this work? And so we're basing our selection process upon these three factors. Are the teachers excited about moving this work forward? Do they have a deep understanding of the pedagogies? And finally, are they already having some level of device usage in their schools? In regards to our Phase One work, Dr. Lockard referred to this earlier. Later this month, we hope to have selected the pyramid. We also had a competition for students where they would help us rebrand this from digital transformation to something else. So hopefully, we'll have those announcements out soon. Additionally, we know that, before you know it, the fall's going to be here, and we're going to have to start distributing, so we're going to have to order some devices. We will be working with our school leadership teams in the pyramids and the high schools in June, and then planning for some teacher professional development and parent information sessions in August. And then in September, school will start, and we will have some devices out with some new ways of learning for kids. And so that's the formal presentation that I have for you all, and I look forward to hearing from your questions.
I just want to say one thing before we conclude, that I just want to commend the board. And as we've looked at other districts and as we've seen this work, the fact that the board has invested and committed in the strategic plan to this work is very, very much unique. And we see what's happening in many of our districts that are trying to transform into this work. It's usually spearheaded by a superintendent or by a group of people, but this has come from you all, so we're really excited about that. That goes to the first bullet on leadership, and that's come from many of you, if not all of you, in some way, shape, or form. And so that's really helping us to move the work along, and being here today is also another part of how we'll be able to move that work along. So I just wanted to commend this board for the commitment you made through the strategic plan. It's not something we see across other districts.
And if I could just make a brief comment, it's hard for me to sit in front of a microphone and not say something. I just wanted to thank Ellen for the presentation and really congratulate her for her leadership in this work. And Dr. Lockard referenced at the beginning that Ellen's formal position is as our manager of our School-Based Technology Specialist Program. And we were really fortunate to hire Ellen this year because she was an assistant principal, but prior to that, in Fairfax, she had actually been our Best Practices Program Manager. So when we started to kind of contemplate what we needed to do with this initiative, we knew that we really wanted it not to be about the technology, but about the teaching and learning. And Ellen has really helped us keep the focus of this work squarely around teaching and learning. So just wanted to recognize her for her great leadership.
Wonderful. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and begin with questions from our colleagues, starting with Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Palchuk.
Well, there's so much here, you know, and I ran over last time, so I'm going to limit myself at the front end this time. Can we go to slide 15, please? So, part of this discussion around digital citizenship, and I think at one point you said that the survey that you did said 80% of families think that it's important to have technology in the classroom. Well, I'm looking at Mr. Press, who's been to my student town halls, and Ms. McLaughlin, who's been to my student town halls. And, you know, I hate to have a theme for the day, but talking to students, part of the question becomes, why do we have technology in the classroom? To do what? And if you talk to students, particularly high school students, one of the biggest reveals and takeaways for me is, they don't particularly love, actually, technology in the classroom. They find themselves to quite often be a de facto help desk for the teacher. That quite often, they're spending more time assisting the technology to do what it's supposed to do than be the recipients of imparting knowledge. And they say they want technology, but they want it to enhance what the teacher is doing. So basically, in a, out of the mouths of babes, they say, we want our teacher to teach us, and then we want means by which we can enhance our learning. And it isn't flipped classrooms. I hate to say it, but I think they're an utter failure. Kids being asked to go home and learn something and then talk about it later when that's the first time they're exposed to material is not using technology effectively. So I, I, I love this. We're going in the right direction, but I also caution that the subtext here is, technology for what sake? Technology to impart and enhance student achievement through transfer of knowledge that isn't happening with an excellent teacher in the classroom, you know, is technology for technology's sake. Also, you know, and I've spent, you know, probably more time than anybody here combined on digital citizenship, I don't think we know what that is yet. I don't think we know what it means, and I don't mean a system, I mean the population. I don't think parents do. I don't think the community does. I don't think athletes do, or politicians, or anybody else. And so this is, I think, probably one of the most difficult things because I think it has the greatest potential to create opportunity for kids if they start elevating their digital footprint correctly. And I've spent time talking with members of IT staff and Dr. Garza, with, you know, particular vendors on the possibility that creates for scholarships and college admittance and internship opportunities, and, 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 if we can guide and coach kids on using technology to their advantage instead of hiding, you know, in the, you know, murky underground of the internet and apps and whatnot. So I don't know that I'm necessarily asking anything, and I feel like I'm sort of threading a common theme here. But, you know, I know that we can do this. I'm still not certain where we're harnessing it, harnessing it. And of course, I'm curious what the one pyramid is that's getting the pilot, and why?
Well, maybe I could respond just real briefly first, and then I think we're all kind of waiting to jump on the microphone here. First of all, I would say, we couldn't agree with you more on both points. On the first point, technology is a tool to embrace and foster student learning. So we're trying to build out our framework of what, you know, what are our core beliefs about instructional practice? And that's what that video was really trying to illustrate. We know what the outcomes are that we want students to achieve. We've articulated those really well as a community around Portrait of a Graduate, and that was exceptional work that we did as a community led by the board. Now it's our job as the educators in the system to put the resources and the materials and the training in place that will help teachers figure out, how do I teach in a way that's going to develop those outcomes and those attributes for students? And we think that technology can support and play a role in that. We think that technology can foster inquiry-based educational practices where students actually have to grapple with big questions and have to research and have to think and analyze and problem-solve, and then construct knowledge and meaning about those types of questions and problems that we put in front of kids. So we're building out our instructional models to support this work right now around Portrait of a Graduate, and technology is just a tool to accelerate those practices in the classroom.
But Dr. Presidio, the question that I'm really asking, so I guess I am asking a question, is while some of us may, in certain work sessions, like earlier today, talk about, and we're not pandering to students, but talk about the student voice, there's, there's nothing I can think of that is more significant to understand where the students are coming from and what's, what is meeting their needs and what is, what is either frustrating them or what is just useless? What is, like, rolling off them like Teflon than this issue? Because, you know, I mean, I've presented at Georgetown University on this. I mean, the more students know about technology, it's an inverse relationship, the less the adults in their lives do, you know? And so if we don't build this, I think, in collaboration with at least the older students and have some perspective on, listen, as I was coming into high school, I wish I had, you know, and fill in some of those blanks. To me, 80% of families saying they think technology in the classroom is very important, I mean, I don't mean to be non-differential to our families, but I don't really care what they think on that. I care, is the technology we're delivering or not delivering to the students meaningful in assisting them in acquiring knowledge and making them critical thinkers? And I think if you don't ask them, asking their parents doesn't, doesn't compute.
I concur with the student voice. That's another piece. We've talked about why this sort of Phase One is so important, because we're going to be asking that all along. How did this work? Was it helpful? Was it not helpful? What were the challenges? What else do you need? What could make this better? All those kinds of questions, as we kind of work through that, are really going to guide us.
And we're really trying to, in any of the new innovation work that we're doing, we're really trying to follow kind of the principles of improvement science and bring those into the education world that really says, you have to understand the user-centered problem, and you have to work with the users to solve those problems. In the case of technology, it's a student-centered problem, and it's a teacher-centered problem, and we have to partner with the students and teachers to figure this out. So part of our phasing and our Phase One is to find that pyramid that we can work really closely with to actually co-construct, to really co-construct what this is going to look like, because we don't know. We don't have all the answers. We have some ideas, but we have more questions than we have answers. And it was really telling, in our application process, we had 10 pyramids submit applications to be the Phase One Pyramid to do this work, and the applications were amazing. They were interactive, they were interdisciplinary, they were student work samples, you know? It was really, really great work that our pyramids did. But it was really interesting to see, some pyramids actually did survey kids and looked for that voice, so they already understand how critical the role of the student is. So it's going to be front and center to the work that we're doing here. Well, we're still finalizing that process. We're going to have some news for you very shortly on that. Okay.
Okay. Did anyone else want to chime in to Ms. Schultz's comments? Okay. I'd like to go on to Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ryan McElveen.
Thank you. This is intriguing. It's especially intriguing for someone like me who has spent the majority of her professional career in the technology sector and have, early on, we worked on ensuring that there was access in, frankly, developing countries. But the reason we did that was because we wanted to make sure that students had access to top world-class teaching. And so the message was, technology as an enabler, not technology for technology's sake. And so I would hope that as we go forward, we really look at this as an enabler for best practices in education. And so along those lines, I have a number of questions and also some comments, because I am on the board of Creighton University's parent board, and they have faced a huge amount of challenges as students that are graduating in the top of their high school classes get to college, and they're very technologically proficient, but they have had challenges on interpersonal skills, collaboration, and other, you know, in conflict management. And so I suggest that we don't rely on technology as a panacea, but rather, when we adopt technology policies, we also have to recognize that they have both positives and negatives associated with it, and we need to proceed with caution. So along those lines, if I can just go through the presentation a bit and bring you to, we talked about the parents on page five, but on slide five, we talk about computer-based project, you talked about the role of technology for creating problem-based and project-based learning opportunities. I would like to have a better understanding from you of why you think that technology is a better use for problem- and project-based learning versus actually having other sorts of problem- and project-based learning with more collaboration. Let me go ahead and go through the questions, and then you all can answer them. I know you talk about the dispelling common misconceptions on page six. I would like to know about any sort of best I would like to know about any sort of best practices on screen time for students, because I know that there is quite a bit of data on the impact of technology and its visual impact. And on page seven, the current realities, I'm very concerned about the percentage of students that don't have devices, and I mean more than just a smartphone, because that really is not the best device for creating. And along those lines is not only devices, but access to broadband capabilities in their home. And when you talk on page eight, you talk about the current realities and the challenges, it would be very helpful to have an inventory of the penetration of technology by school or by pyramid, because I think that that will drive some of the decision-making. And then, on your slide regarding the technology timeline, it would be helpful to have metrics on the adoption based on each of those three blocks. And on page 10, metrics on, once again, on the impact of the various initiatives that you've had, because we've got lots of good examples there, but it would be helpful to have metrics on how each of these initiatives led to student success, more than just qualitative examples. And whether or not on page 11, we have where it's worked the best. And then, finally, I would love to know what the real, if you've actually done a business plan on what the cost is of doing a one-to-one initiative, and not only the initial startup cost, but the residual cost, and residual cost of not only hardware, but on continuous professional development and application development. And on page 15, we talk about our effective business partnerships. Our effective business partnerships aren't equally spread out across this county today, and so, when we say this, it makes me quite concerned that we need to have equity in how we have our business partnerships. And I would urge that in the whole discussion of one-to-one, that we have equity in our way of accomplishing it, because when you talk about relying on parent organizations, certain parent organizations have more capability than others. And so, as we shift the cost burden to parent organizations, we create equity issues again. And if we have some data on the blended learning approaches and how they have contributed to greater success than non-blended learning approaches. And then, when you talk about wanting to shift instructional funds to make it happen, we'd like to know exactly what that impact is on the budget, not only in the near term, but longer term, especially as we are still in budget season, and if this is a huge cost driver, and we'll take money out of schools and shift burdens, then we need to know that And then, lastly, you talk about a technology user fee. The technology user fee, I would wonder if you actually got a legal read on that based on the state of Virginia requirement to provide a free education? And I would love to know the five high schools that are part of the Virginia e-Learning Grant, and I think that's enough. Thank you.
I'm not sure how you would like me to address those now, or...
What we did in the prior session is that school board members, especially when we have extensive questions like this, that we'll submit them to Dr. Garza and Dr. Lockhart, and definitely Dr. Duran, since you're heading up the team. And then, that way, we can copy all the board members, so we'll see the questions.
To summarize, though, it's basically, how are we going to ensure that we have equity in any sort of rollout of a program like this? How do we have best metrics that actually say this is a better way of doing it than traditional learning styles? And most importantly, if we're looking, what are the real budget impacts, and not only short-term, but long-term?
Very good.
You've done a great job of capturing all three of those primary buckets that I heard in your questions. So, you know, I don't know, Dr. Lockhart or Dr. Duran, if you guys want to speak even at just the macro level to the questions Ms. Corbett Sanders raised, because I can tell you, it's like you cloned my thinking already, so it's going to come back again when my turn's up.
Well, clearly, all, right now, our current reality shows that we don't have equity. Our current reality shows that we have many of those issues that you raised, Corbin Sanders. So, in Phase One, that is a large part of what we're focusing on in terms of how are we going to get that equity? How are we going to be able to answer your questions? And some of those questions are answerable quickly through a response, and we get it to you, but at the bigger level, those are a lot of the issues that we're going to be digging deeply into as we look at Phase One. When we look at other districts, to answer your question, which one has been more successful? That depends upon your approach and their approach. We have our own needs here in a large county of ours, so we do see Baltimore County very similar to us, having a lot of successes, but some differences in terms of how they rolled it out. So, we will be definitely looking at the sustainability around equity. We have looked legally at some of those questions. We don't have all the answers yet, as we're in the beginning phase, but be rest assured, Ms. Corbett Sanders and the rest of the board, that equity is one of the reasons why we're even doing this. It is the driver for why we're even engaging in this, because we're seeing across the county a real lack of equity around access, instruction in the area of technology. So, that is what is driving this whole initiative. That is what this is all about for us, and that is what we seek to be able to have a plan for moving forward division-wide.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead. We have Ms. Palchuk, followed by Mr. McElveen, followed by Ms. Strauss, and then Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I definitely appreciate the effort, and I do agree that we have a lack of both equity of access, but also just of use, both in and out of the classroom. I know we have many schools where they have the carts in the school, but not necessarily all the students have access to that technology at home. So, a little bit, I think, following up, my main theme around this is, overall, it sounds like pretty nice plan. I'd love to see more details. So, I think some of it was alluded to in the previous questions, basically looking at, you know, and we can obviously revamp a plan, but having the plan, what is the timeline? What is the budget? How will it be implemented? How will the professional development look around it? Understanding, you know, myself being a millennial teacher, I had a very different experience in the classroom from some bumer teachers. And we were all passionate about technology, but just had different experiences, different ways that we looked at collaborative learning and project-based problem-solving and all of that. So, I think it's really critical that we look at the professional development besides a framework for decision-making. I know we've looked at that for other parts of our system, but I hope on the technology front, visiting schools, I've had some questions about, you know, how or who makes the decisions on our software? Who and how are decisions made, you know, on policies, on the hardware and software? So, basically, I hope we can come up with a framework of what decisions are system-wide, what decisions are school-wide or region-wide, and what decisions are down to the classroom level. I think that just having, you know, everyone, children and adults, need frameworks, and I think having a better framework just makes it a little bit less scary as a teacher, as a parent, as a student, who is making those decisions and what is the budget around those. It's sometimes helpful. I would love to know what lessons were, I guess, I was hoping today, I'd heard that we'd, you know, we're going to learn about the Chromebooks, which I love, and some of the other things we'd learned, talked about. So, I would love to have a sense of what did we learn specifically from the different pilot programs, and how are those going to be used or, you know, not used in the next phases? Sorry, let me see. How do we get input from our teachers, our ESPITS, our administration, in addition to students, into how the program will look? And really, would just love to know, I guess, we have a little sense of Phase One, what are the following phases? I do, I think technology is great, as I've said before, a pen is technology. So, I think it's really critical that we create toolboxes, especially for educators. Sometimes, it's just knowing what tools are there, how they can be implemented in the classroom in a lesson. So, just like with our other learning strategies, you can kind of know easily where you can go for what you're looking for. So, some of that being created, you know, system-wide, but other things where we have more flexibility within a classroom is, how do I have access to a person to ask for that information? The tools we have readily available for us that have been tried and implemented, and just how we share that, both within a school and within our whole division. Thank you. Sorry, lots of questions.
Ms. McGlaughlin, if I might make a comment to Ms. Palchuk. I just wanted to say that one of the things that I took away from some of the visits to the other districts was, each of them, with maybe the exception of Mooresville, because there are only about 4,000 students total, but particularly in Baltimore County, was, they did start at a very small scale in terms of the beginning of the work, and part of that was because they knew that they couldn't etch in stone, here's exactly what we're going to do, and this is what it's going to look like across our system, until they got in and had those opportunities to talk to teachers, talk to students, talk to parents, talk to principals about, just what I commented on earlier, what's working, what isn't. And a lot of their thinking was shifted or adjusted based on kind of that smaller scale, working through it, problem-solving some issues. So, that's exactly why we didn't come today with, here's the grand plan for the next four years, because we recognize we have a lot to learn, and we have to take the time to ask our stakeholders, because we don't want to put something in place that's not going to be beneficial or impacting student achievement. And so, I appreciate your comments.
So, can I respond to that? I do, I appreciate that. I think what was said earlier is that we're not starting at ground zero. And so, although, you know, we haven't done Phase One formally yet, so many of our classrooms have already started to use technology, have a lot of input that I've heard from what has worked, what hasn't worked, what they dream of would work. So, I just, I guess, I know we're hesitant to have a concrete plan, but kind of what we've gathered so far, what we've learned so far, and what we expect to try and implement, and what questions we'll be asking in Phase One, whether they be through surveys, through focus groups, you know, making sure we're going to all the stakeholders. I guess that's just a little part, if that's already there. I, as a board member, would just love to know, I'm passionate about this, where we are in that phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. We're now moving on to Mr. McElveen, then Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Evans.
Thanks, Ms. McGlaughlin. I want to preface my remarks by saying that this is directed at no individual, but I think it's completely unacceptable that this board was not informed of these pilots prior towards this going out to the public. I scoured all of our previous superintendent's memos. There was absolutely nothing, and I actually heard about it from concerned teachers who came to me. And at the time, I thought they were referring to the slide that was presented to the Board of Supervisors that called for a $63.3 million investment to go one-to-one across the district. And I said, oh, no, you're wrong. We aren't doing anything along those lines. And then, to come back and find out that we had already put out an RFP, or whatever you call it, to the school pyramids, was very disheartening to me. And it kind of took me back to where we were three or four years ago, at the end of Dr. Dale's tenure, when teachers, when we had this explosion of concerns about teacher workload. And at the time, we had said, no surprises, please bring to the board any new pilots you plan to do in the district. And of course, those don't require board approval, but just so the board is aware, so we're kept apprised of what's going on in the system, especially with something this so big, and something so big and so important to our future work. So, anyway, it was, this was very concerning to me. And I will just say that I'm fully behind where we're going here. I had conversations, you know, when Mr. Presidio first arrived four years ago, saw his passion for this work and finally getting us here. But, we can't embark on things like these without the support of the school board or without at least our knowledge of it. And I just hope, not only with this initiative, but going forward, that we continue along the lines of no surprises when it comes to these things. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen, thank you very much. I will take my turn where it goes in the end, but all I can say is, I very much appreciate you providing that context, because now I won't be a lone voice at the table today. Ms. Strauss, then Ms. Evans, then Mr. Wilson, Ben, Pat Hines, myself.
Okay. Thank you very much. I very much like the broad outlines, the goals, and the approach that you are taking, particularly upfront, saying that our focus is not on the device, but it is on the teaching and learning. That is absolutely critical, because sort of the general population, you hear, oh, you know, it's the device, the device, and that leads us down a dark hole. I also think it's, I believe that it is very timely that we are finally beginning to have a more organized way of going down the path, and there's obviously a lot more that's got to be fleshed out. One of our, and I should say, I remember probably 15 years ago, encouraging inquiry-based learning, and those who've had questions as to what technology can do for it, oh, my. Watching inquiry-based learning, and at the time, it was being used only in highly gifted centers, as those were the only children who could somehow do this kind of work, and it was very, very cumbersome. Clearly, technology, and not just computers, but all the other devices, all the other ways that you can make teaching and learning more efficient, will make inquiry-based learning really come alive for everyone, and that is really how we get to the higher-level thinking skills. I also, even in the frustration, as we've kind of been all over the map on how we use technology in the schools, yada, 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 part of it is cost, but I think the other part, we also needed to wait for the industry to begin to sift out what was going to work, what was not going to work, what are the appropriate tools, because the industry has changed so many times, and you don't want to sink big dollars into something which then very quickly turns out to be not a useful tool, is cumbersome, is too expensive, or what have you. And I think that we are at the point now where enough is known about instructional technology, which is different than business technology, that I think now we can learn much more about what's useful, what's not useful, so that we're not wasting time, staff development, money, all of that, because I've certainly seen a lot of the school divisions that have sunk big bucks, Los Angeles, and then you turn around and find, oops, big mistake. At NSBA in Boston, this is a much better plan than anything that I saw at NSBA, and you're to be complimented. And I concentrate a lot of time looking at blended learning, look at individualized learning, look at classrooms, looking at technology, talking to a lot of people that are doing it in a lot of places across the country, and this, to me, is the most intelligent way to begin the process. This is only a beginning. This is clearly not the end, because we have a lot to learn yet. So, kudos for organizing and really is as an inquiry on our part, what is going to work, what's useful for children, and people have said we need to think about what the kids actually say. It will be interesting to see the $70 fee for students, because that is also our issue, is how we're going to pay for this one over time. But I do think it's very, I think it's time. It is past time, well, I don't know about past time, it's time now to do this. I remember when Nancy Sprague was around and giving those first speeches on how the world has changed, how instruction has changed, but we just, we did not have the tools to really, you know, kick it up a notch. You think of in the very beginning, when Nick Negroponte at the Innovation Lab at MIT. You think of in the very beginning, when Nick Negroponte at the Innovation Lab at MIT, when he invented that cool little computer that they thought they could wind up and use in third-world countries. And it was meaningless, because it's not the tool. It's the instructional end of it. Just put a tool in a kid's hands, and they'll play games. And we want to make this much more meaningful. So it would have been good, I think, if we'd all kind of known a little more about what's going on, but be that as it may. I see this as a plan. The question I have is going to be the feedback, because how are we going to analyze this? Because this is really an outline for going forward. No decisions as to exactly what is the best way, the wrong way. But what is the reporting back going to be? In other words, how are we going to assess where we're going, kind of the next step in the timeline?
So just a few things, if I could, and I'm going to come back and answer your question, but I want to start out by prefacing, I think a common theme that I've heard from many of the questions, which are great questions, we really welcome them, and we'll get you as robust and complete responses as we can. And then we'd love to have continuing conversations, even if they're one-on-one, to help answer some of these questions. But one common theme, I think, has been, you know, what are the lessons learned and what's the framework that we're using? And definitely in this presentation, we've really painted broad strokes, but I want to call you back, and I don't know what slide it is, but it lists the seven design principles. Those are all research-based design principles that we've taken from the research literature and have actually been collated together by a number of different organizations that really promote the adoption of instructional technology. And we have success indicators in terms of what would success look like in each of these areas. So what does success look like in terms of digital resources? What does it look like in sustainable financing models? So we know what we need to build, but as Dr. Lockhart said, we're not presuming to have all the answers on how to do that until we can actually co-construct the answers to some of those questions with our schools, with our teachers, with our students, and with our parents. So I don't want you to think that there's not a research base behind this, or there aren't a lot of lessons learned, because there are. And then, Ms. Strauss, back to, if you could just paraphrase your questioning, so I can make sure that I answer it completely.
Oh, the timeline. Yeah, and I went back, I can see the annotated bibliography, which gives you the research base for this, but it again, it is the analysis, the look back. In other words, how will we know if we have met, or how we are doing? Because I suspect this will take some time to shake this one out.
Yeah.
How will we know the progress that we're making against it? Because that is very meaningful to make sure that we actually hit our targets of improving student learning.
Right. And I think that's where there's going to be a lot of convergence with the other goals that we have in the strategic plan around increased learning outcomes, particularly around the development of Portrait of a Graduate attributes. So this year, this is work that we've done this year with respect to Portrait of a Graduate, we've really defined what would success look like in terms of Portrait of a Graduate outcomes at the different grade bands. So primary, intermediate, middle school, high school, we're developing tools to assess that. And I think part of the success here is going to be, what are the metrics that we choose to look at, that we want to value as a school system, that will help us say whether or not we're being successful with respect to our overall learning outcomes? And what role is technology playing in promoting that and accelerating that? So I think we're going to see some convergence across those initiatives. And again, you know, thinking about improvement science, looking at the research base about school systems that have done this well, you start small, you implement things, you iterate, you improve, and you grow, and you scale. But you've got to do that at a rate and pace that you've got the ability to support. So we've got a lot of learning to do in Phase One, and we haven't mapped out a timeline to get to all of our schools, because we've got to figure out what are the inputs and the supports that it's going to take to actually have this work really well in a pyramid before we've got a better idea of how long it's going to take to be able to scale to the schools.
Right, yeah, and I understand that. I don't want to go to scale until we know what we're doing. But my question is, when will we see the evaluation, I suppose at the end of next year? And how, how much, because that's going to be critical, because it's clearly in Portrait of the Graduate and our strategic plan. We do want to resolve this one now. We want to go down this road. So what are the goalposts? What is the timing? When are we going to hear more about how successful this was within the pilots where we're going to do this?
I think that's a great question for the board, in terms of, you know, how frequent would you like feedback, and how frequently would you like us to be engaged? We're going to be working with the schools on a regular basis. We're looking at mileposts, not just on an annualized basis. So if you wanted, you know, biannual reports or quarterly reports, we'd be happy to work with you around that.
I think we're going to want a lot more of that information, because this is, this is just a very important nut to crack.
Sure. And we'd love to work with you on that.
Okay. Ms. Strauss, anything else?
I think that does it. Thanks.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. You can tell there's a lot of interest in this topic. I do want to go back to the equity issue, which is fundamental to this. If you go to Slide 24, on how the pyramids are going to be selected, I don't see need on there. Is that implied? Or is that not really, are the pyramids with the greatest need going to?
One thing to remember is that in addition to a particular pyramid, based on, again, it was based on an application process, but we also are including all of our e-Backpack schools, and those are all our high-poverty schools. The e-Backpack schools include Stewart, Annandale, Mount Vernon, Falls Church, and Lee. So those high schools will be part of this as well, in terms of being able to participate in the professional development, and a lot of our review, and a lot of our analysis. So those are...
So they will have the same thing going on as this new pyramid?
Not the entire pyramid, but at the high schools, because they have the one-to-one e-Backpack, which is a state grant, which is allowing us to purchase devices for every student, nine through 12, in those high schools.
Okay. Well, so that helps me a lot, particularly when we talk about then professional development. You say that that's going to start in August. The folks working on this, will they be, when will, I mean, is this going to be a week? Is it two weeks? How much professional development are we talking about? And is there an added?
Ellen can answer. To begin, a lot of this, as we said, is still being worked out. We have a whole team working on professional development in each of those areas. But Ellen, who runs all of our school-based technology specialists and PD is particularly responsible for that area.
So we are in the planning stages, and we have limited staff members that will work with multiple schools. So we have to sort of time them out. When we can, when can Stewart bring back their teacher leaders to work on this? When can Mount Vernon bring back their teacher leaders? So we're going to be working with our central teams, our school-based technology specialists, to then do the professional learning based on teacher availability.
Okay. And of course, in everything we do, we do need to be thinking about teacher workload as well. So presumably, this is going to add to workload. You know, we have to be cognizant of that. I guess that's one of the reasons why you asked for a level of commitment by teachers.
That's why we did survey our teachers, to make sure that they were interested and had a high level of interest in engaging in this work.
I guess I'm just saying, we also need to be cognizant of giving teachers the time that they need for the professional development and to deal with the fact that this is added workload. I mean, and it's going to be very significant for them to roll this out. The fee, the $70 fee, thinking about all the folks that can't afford a $70 fee.
That's obviously a sliding scale. We would, you know, yeah, just like we do with any other fees, in terms of free and reduced. That definitely is part of that plan.
And I'll bring this up. You know, some of us, we talk about access to the Internet, and I realize that's fundamental to the success of this. We have to figure that out. Some of us went to a session on equity at NSBA, where they asked students how many of them had had their utilities cut off, you know, and a bunch of hands went up. And, you know, we don't think about that. We don't think about, you know, kids having to use the candles, and kids having to go out to the car. And I just think we have to recognize that there are some students in severe poverty, where it's not just a matter of a device, it's not even just a matter of Internet access, it's a matter of things like that. So I just, I raise that, because particularly as we go to our very high-poverty schools, that's going to be an issue, too. So we have to deal with how we deal with very high poverty. I know we're not going to be device-focused, but we, if we have a device, we've got to give them a device. So have we made a decision on that?
The selection of devices is not, has not been made, so that will be something that we'll be working again with our pyramid schools and whatnot. And we have a lot of research about that, but we'll be working with them to make that decision. Obviously, we'll be making that, at least for the pilot pyramid, fairly soon. And it may not be the same device K through 12. So we're looking at that. And we may even do some of our reallocation of equipment, not necessarily even just funds, but we may be reallocating some of our existing equipment, perhaps at the lower grades, and purchasing for the higher grades, et cetera. So we're looking at all those different options right now. We'll be working, as we said, once the pyramid is selected, we'll be inviting them to be participating in part of those decision processes.
Would you envision down the road, when we do roll this out, that ultimately we will pick one device? And Mrs. Strauss mentioned Los Angeles, we don't want to go down that road, what they did, but...
I mean, we hope to have, you know, a single device, certainly by grade level, if nothing else. So we are, you know, that would be our goal. It's obviously better for support and being able to have spare parts and all those kind of things, the more we can do some kind of standardization. But we're not at that point yet.
I think that I'm probably going to have some follow-up, which I'll just email you, but, you know, thank you. I think that it, I like the fact that we're heading down this road. We, I know we'd all love to do it a little bit faster, but, you know, we want to do it carefully, we want to do it right before we do it fast.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We're moving on to Mr. Wilson, followed by Ben Press, followed by Ms. Hines, and then Jeanette Huff.
Okay, thank you. I think that the first thing I'd like to comment on is that the presentation, I think everybody here is struck by the scope of it, and that we're talking about really, as the video said, a new, a new learning model that's inquiry-based, personalized, student-centered. And so I guess the, that gives me pause, but I have to say that I really appreciate that we're having this conversation about something that really is of huge magnitude, potentially for the, for the division. So setting aside some of the surprise, I think that this is a really useful conversation, because I think it will help as you move forward. It sounds like ultimately this sort of implements, or the implementation of this results in somewhat transformative approach towards education in Fairfax County. Having said that, how long is the pilot? Is it intended to be a one-year, two-year, three-year?
Well, right now, we're really, we're looking at least for a one-year pilot. That's what our current plan is. Yes.
So at the, and this is just to echo some of the other comments. Do you have specific metrics that you will be able to share with us to evaluate after one year? So, you know, academic, cost, effect on the culture, teachers, parent, student satisfaction, et cetera?
We will have those. And just a note of caution, too, the research indicates, and Baltimore County Public Schools actually decided to wait three years before they included student achievement data in any metric reporting. Now, I'm not saying we'll take that, but as we begin to finalize our approaches to this, I think that we have to be thoughtful in thinking about what are those impacts that we expect to achieve in one year, two-year, three-year?
So I guess it could be longer than a single-year pilot, depending on how it progresses? Is that?
Yes. And actually, we're not calling it a pilot, because when you think of a pilot versus a phase, phase means we're phasing into the work or learning from it. Pilot is you're going to do it once, and you may not move forward with it. This is something that we are all committed to doing, to move forward with in terms of transforming our instruction and what we expect for student learning and instruction in the classroom from teachers. So it's a little minor thing, but when you think about the difference between pilot and phase, that's why we chose the word Phase One. So we'll be working with that first pyramid intensely for a year, and then on, from the learning, from them expanding it as we learn what Ms. Strauss said, is an inquiry-based approach to what we're going to do in the next phase, if you will.
And I think that even underscores, you know, more heavily the need to have those metrics in place in ways that you can
Absolutely.
... inform the board in terms of the progress that is in the implementation of it at Phase One.
Absolutely. And again, we'll work with the board to determine how often you want us to come back and report out on those metrics, because we have a variety of metrics that we'll be looking at in terms of how we're doing with our Phase One. I know it's, I keep saying pilot myself, but Phase One.
I'll try not to call that anymore. So the comparison jurisdictions, I didn't notice the local jurisdictions. Did you also look at Montgomery, Loud, and Prince William Arlington to see what they were doing along these lines? Consult with them?
We have. I mean, we've looked at a lot of the different areas. We felt that some of the ones that really were the farthest ahead in this work in terms of a true transformation, like was Baltimore and Henrico, who's been doing this for almost over a decade, I think. And Mooresville, which has been a lot in terms of, you know, a lot of the press and things like that, they've had a lot of visibility in terms of their one-to-one. But we have looked and compared and worked with some of the other local jurisdictions, but they don't feel like they were quite as far along in terms of a true transformation and really in the instructional focus as some of those others that we did select in terms of visits.
In addition to that, we're really part of a professional learning network around this. So we've seen what other districts are doing around the country. But again, as Mary Best said, really, the districts that we were pointing to are the ones that are more local, that we think kind of fit our context. But we're looking at best practices outside of the local area as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think that we should try to avoid any missteps that we can possibly avoid in the process. So these, you know, collaboration with all of the very smart people in other jurisdictions nearby would probably be useful as well. Now, just, this is one question that relates back to the presentation that Megan and I participated in. You mentioned during the presentation that you were working with a consultant. And I wonder whether you could just talk a little about what role has the consultant played so far, and what role, if any, will they play during implementation?
We've been working with a company called Modern Teacher, which is an organization which really helps districts take a look at organizing this work. Just, they actually have been working with Baltimore in terms of helping them develop their plans. So we've just begun to work with them, and they're helping us sort of frame this model and frame the plan. So they were going to be working with them. And they also have done some, a lot of work around professional development, which we're going to be able to tap into. They've done a lot of things in terms of online professional development that, again, once we look at those opportunities, we may be able to offer that even to all of our teachers, not necessarily just to those that are in part of our Phase One. So it's called Modern Teacher, and we've just begun to work with them.
So they'll be involved. Would they be able to come potentially to a future board meeting on a
Sure, they'd be happy to do that.
Presentation on terms of how progressing?
We'd be happy to have them, if you'd like us to include them.
Okay. And then the last question I have is on the business partnerships. Are any of the applications, do they already have business partnerships in place for their high school pyramid that they could utilize that might defray cost or promote the implementation?
Most of our schools, at least every pyramid, has at least some business partnerships. So once we, once the pilot is selected, the Phase One pyramid is selected, we can look and see what opportunities they may have in terms of being able to include their existing business partners, and then potentially working with our communications office in terms of seeing if there's any additional opportunities for business partnerships that we can tap into.
But in terms of their applications themselves?
We didn't specifically focus then on the application, but as we said, many of our, many of our schools do have existing partnerships that we hope to tap into.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Mr. Press, followed by Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Huff, and then Ms. Kofax.
Thank you very much. I consider myself to be part of a generation of students where technology was not really a major component of learning experience when I entered elementary school. But now, as I'm leaving high school, technology is a cornerstone of everybody's learning experience. And so I think that being in that situation and in that cohort, it's given me a kind of interesting perspective to both sides of the issue. What I will say is that I'm really, really pleased that this conversation is staying around teaching and learning, and that empowering student achievement is the ultimate goal of all of these initiatives. And I think that really speaks to the way that, you know, this board and leadership team, you know, has their discussions. And I think that's really powerful. But at the same time, we need to have honest conversations about what technology is going to mean in our schools. To Ms. Schultz's point, I really appreciated that we kind of led into this with the student voice, and I'm never going to fault you for bringing that up. I think it's really good when we can bring that to the table. One of the things that I hear most about, and is one of the most frustrating to me, is when I hear from students who tell me that, for example, a common example I hear is that, we've got a smartboard in our classroom, and my teacher moves it to the side so she can access the whiteboard. That is something to me that is deeply frustrating, because there's so much potential there, but it may not, you know, it might be an issue of the teacher's not necessarily trained in how to use it, or it doesn't fit with their pedagogy. There are any number of issues that can go into that. But something that I think we need to continue to be respectful of is that technology may not always fit in with that teacher's style. And we have a diverse teaching corps, and I think that's a real strength of our division. But technology is not always going to fit in with that style. And I think that, that using that one-to-one idea that every student is going to be using technology in the classroom might not be as meaningful as we might hope. So when I look at this challenge, I ask myself, what problem are we trying to solve? The problem that comes to my mind that we should be trying to solve, and I've heard bits and pieces of it today, is the equity piece. I think we need to focus on equity of access to technology. I think that is really where the challenge lies for us. I do not I do not think that the, the challenge lies in not using technology effectively, although that's something that, that does happen. I, I think it really, for me, is an equity issue. And sure, there's work we can do to make the technology use more meaningful, but I would hope that this initial discussion around bringing more technology into our schools be focused on equity. So with that said, access and one to one, you know, just to recap that point, are in my estimation two distinct things. They can be, they can come together, but you, you can have access without being necessarily one to one. So I just wanted to put that out there. I had some, some concerns about the user fee. And, you know, having interacted with, with students at some of our higher poverty schools, this is a real concern that, number one, I don't want to in any way, shape, or form price students out of the market from effectively using technology. And I, I understand that we're, we're really, you know, trying to do that, under that model and I would appreciate any elaboration you could do there. I want to make sure though that we're not in any way penalizing our students who may not opt to pay that. So any, any information you could give there would be, would be really appreciated. And my kind of last comment or question is that moving forward, given the scarcity of resources we have for this particular line item, you know, as much as I love to pay for, for an iPad for every student or a laptop for every student, you know, the, the scale and scope of our division makes that a big challenge. Is that, are there ways for us moving forward as we're looking to expand access to technology in the classroom? With that idea that some teachers are going to be able to fit it into their teaching style a little bit better, could we move toward more, towards more of a grant based model where a teacher might rip, you know, ask for technology in the classroom? You know, because again, when we're giving teachers a smart board without them asking for it, that's not, in a lot of cases terribly effective. So I just had those few questions and I, I really am glad we, we're having this conversation and I want to commend you all in the fact that we are bringing the student voice into this. And that I'm hoping that student feedback is going to be a key metric from this phase, this first phase of the study. And we can take that back and say, how effective has this been?
So again, I would just say, just real briefly, I mean, great questions. We don't unfortunately have all the answers or even the time to sufficiently get into the discussion right now, but just a couple of things. I would say, one, the number one issue, as Dr. Duran said, is really around equity. And it's hard to get at the equity issue if we're not able to get the students the devices that don't have the devices right now. So that's part of what we're really talking about as a priority here. But of course, the devices without the instructional focus really is meaningless, as you pointed out. So we have to kind of struggle with both issues at the same time. However, I want to make sure that people understand, we're not suggesting just because a student has a device, that the device would be on all day and that the expectation would be that the teacher would teach with the device on all day. Some things are going to be enhanced with technology and some things need to be done with your hands and paper and scissors and glue and, and we get that. So we're, we're trying to make sure that we provide the, the device to bridge the equity gap while simultaneously supporting teachers and saying, these are ways that you can use the device to enhance and accelerate the development and portrait of graduate outcomes that fit into an overall concept of instructional design within Fairfax County. Sometimes the technology will be there and sometimes it won't. So again, not all projects have to be done on the computer. Not all problems have to be solved on the computer. But the computer is there to help with the research and the analysis and the creativity and the problem solving. So again, we're trying to figure that out, but we just don't have all the answers to how best to do that right now.
And let me just clarify a couple of things on the fee. So first of all, we have not, it was mentioned seventy dollars as an example. As we've looked at districts who've used the fee, it's been anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars. We're not even saying it is going to be seventy. That is just somewhere in the middle. We're still exploring that. So it could be less, could be more. But on the bottom line of that is that we would nev- never ever deny access to a student. It would be on a sliding scale for those that are free and reduced would not have to pay the fee or would be on a, you know, reduced per there. If they were reduced, then would be reduced from the fifty dollars, let's say, if it was free, would be free. So we would never ever want to deny that. And again, I don't want anyone to walk away and think it's seventy dollars because we haven't ultimately decided that yet. And we're exploring how that may or may not be possible for us. Again, we've just looked at other districts who are using it. And to your piece on student voice, it is so important to us, which is why Dr. Lockhart said at the beginning that this is not going to be called digital transformation. It is going to be called a name that the students have selected. I think we had over fifty entries of possible names from students or student groups, some did it together, about what we should call this. And it's so important to us that student voice is in the primary front of this, that it's going to be named something that the students thought it should be called and that we're still going through all those entries right now. But again, to clarify on the fee, we haven't decided how much it is or even how we'll do that. We just looked at what other divisions have done, our districts, and it's ranged anywhere from fifty to a hundred. And it certainly, certainly, certainly would be on a sliding scale and some students would not have to pay if they could not afford to pay. Or if they could afford, perhaps it's a little lesser about than what the fee would be. Want to make sure we commit to that because if equity is what we're all about, we cannot then turn around and shut the door to certain people because they can't afford it. We would never do that.
Great, thank you. All right, we next have Ms. Huff, followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax, and then Mr. Moon.
Ms. McLaughlin, did you skip me maybe? Was I after Mr. Press?
Oh, I'm terribly sorry, Ms. Hines. Yes, you are correct, you were right for Ms. Huff.
Thank you, paying close attention to where I am on the list, you know how that is. Well, I just, just to respond to the concern about whether or not the board was informed about this. We did, thank you to the clerk, Ms. Muehlberg, for sending around to us an email that we did get back in February. We are always copied on the action grams and that was in there. And I appreciate the board being copied on that. If there's a concern that maybe this is the sort of thing that the chair or the superintendent should be highlighting for the board and sort of belt and suspendering this particular type of information, we can do that. But I think in fairness, you know, we should let the superintendent and the chair know and have some sense of criteria for what sorts of things need to be sent out twice to the board because we're not going to send everything out twice to the board. So, but I hear the concern and we'll take it back and talk about it. So I, I just, I wanted to say, I, I loved the video. I think there are some things that you really have to see, and the smiles on the kids' faces, that they were clearly engaged and you were clearly in several different classrooms and in different places. So that was very exciting. I mean, you know, the teacher and me looked at that and thought, what an, you know, what an engaging classroom, not only for the kids, but for the teacher. And I loved the teacher who said, this is what I want for my son. And to be able as a teacher to go into your own classroom and deliver for other people's kids, what you want for your own child is the dream, right, for a teacher? So that's wonderful. I, I also think when we get to this question of, is this rolling out a whole new way of teaching? It's not. I mean, project based learning, inquiry based learning is, you know, it's a hundred years old. John Dewey talked about it, right? So it's, it's not that this is brand new. It's just we've kind of gotten away from it because of the accountability grind that we've been under in teaching to standardized tests. And this is such a welcome return to the right kind of teaching. And being able to use technology as such a really powerful tool to get that done is wonderful. I sense that this plan really is very strategic and because it is grounded in classroom instruction and that's where, that's where it has to be. And I've, I mean, I think in a system our size, and when you're talking about a major investment, absolutely, I think it has to start as a project of the willing and able, which is kind of what you're doing right now. I love the idea of putting it out to schools, that we had ten pyramids that felt like they were willing and able is wonderful. That gives me hope, you know, when we see these videos, it's great to see the examples, but I always wonder, how much of that is happening? How close are we to every classroom in every building, you know? And I, at some point, hopefully we'll get the answer, we're there, you know? But that tells me that a lot of people, educators out there feel that they have permission, that they are empowered to do this kind of work in the classroom and that's very exciting. The question I have comes back to what are we taking off the plate, right? Because we always ask this, do, will, are teachers going to have to prepare for that high stakes test and do all this great inquiry based learning at the same time? What, what, what comes off? And so specifically, I wondered if I could get an answer to the question of how many testing windows do we still have mandated in buildings? And I think we have, and you may not know right now, but I think we have sort of a system wide mandate, but I feel like it's different in different schools. And I know that those testing windows eat up the technology in the building and they also eat up a lot of time. So just wondered if you had an answer to that right now.
I think we just have one mandatory testing window, but for our project momentum schools that I were, that are, we're having a little bit more direct focus on, they do have more required testing. And that's, you know, it's, that's just sort of the, the way it goes.
And that is one of the, the challenges that we've got because we have technology in our schools right now. In fact, we have quite a bit of it. It's on different platforms and it's different devices and different machines. But when you take the required state standards, SOL tests, and then you take the required computerized WEDA for English language learner tests, and then you take internally required benchmark tests, I mean, it all adds up. And it takes a lot of time away from those resources. And that's where it makes it much more difficult for a teacher to actually be able to integrate technology into some of their instructional practices right now because it's not available necessarily when you would like to do it. Or it's not necessarily all on the same device or the same platform, so it's difficult to manage in your classroom. So we've moved away for, in terms of the requirements around internal assessments in the division, we loosened that up about three years ago. But as, as Mary Best said, for our project momentum schools, our intensive project momentum schools, we do have an additional testing window.
And that kind of, and this is my last comment, of course, that gets to the question of equity, right? Because those are probably also the schools where we worry about availability of devices. Because those are, if there are schools that are high poverty, and I think many of them are, then those may be schools where the parent community is not able to provide as much as some of the other PTA's. I could be wrong, but in general, I, I think that may exacerbate the equity. And, and do those teachers have?
They do have title one funding and some other funding that they do, they do have equipment money from. So there's, it's, there's a little bit of both. Yes, you don't have as much of the PTA type support, but you do have other resources that you can put towards some of that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have Ms. Huff, followed by Ms. Kofax, by, and then Mr. Moon.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try and make sense here because I've been gathering questions as everyone else has been asking questions. So the first question I have is, are the survey results up or we can read them from the technology survey?
Because we have some speak up survey data we can, we can give to you. That was, it's a national survey and actually that survey, I was going to say, also included the students. We had a lot of student responses to our speak up survey. It was students, staff, and parents all responded to that survey. So we can look and see what kind of summary data we have. I don't think we published that, I mean, just, we just recently got that data back, but we can certainly get you some of that data.
I, I mean, I think not only for myself, but for the public as well. People fill out these surveys and they want to see what the results are and then what are we doing with those results? There was, I had heard some concerns about the survey itself feeling very leading in, in the use of getting technology in the classrooms. And so I think it would be helpful as we consider what we do with that information. And I did go to one of the sessions at NSBA and I think it was New Jersey who was doing it. And I'm sure, of course, state laws are different. They are doing a user fee though. They seem to feel like it was going okay, so I don't know if that would help you or not. I don't know the laws behind it. But I was recently at Dr. Garza's last town hall in Chantilly and I don't know, maybe there's twenty speakers. I would say four or five of the speakers spoke up about concerns about technology in the classroom. And so although we're talking about not having technology for technology's sake, I still think there's a lot of concern, including one of the speakers was a pediatrician. And regardless of whether we're saying that it's not to be used all the time, every hour of this school day, we're obviously not going to put a time or an hour. So we do need to be concerned about, no matter what guidelines we give on doing project based learning after May, we're still hearing that our kids are watching movies, right? It's going to be the same kind of thing. We could encourage, but if parents are looking at their kids being in front of a screen for a certain number of hours a day, what are the consequences of that? Just even from a medical eye strain, headache, those sorts of things. I really want to hear us considering how we're going to address those questions and concerns from the community. And with the technology for every student, this was one thing I didn't hear at NSBA. So we're going to, even kindergartners are going to have a tablet or, or a device to go home with?
We're not necessarily going to have them bring, bring devices home. So that's part of what we're going to be working out with our, with our phase one pyramid is to, which, you know, by grade level, what we're going to be giving them. And so it may just have, may have access just in the classrooms as opposed to being taken home. So we're still working out exactly.
So what, do we know how, how, how young we're considering?
Well, and certainly we're going to have them all have access to devices, but not necessarily for bringing them home. So that's part of what we're still working out in terms of working with our, with our pyramid in terms of not only which devices, but whether or not, at what grade level they'll be bringing them home, et cetera. In which, in which grades we will also, we also continue will be having them BYOD if they would like to. So all of that kind of fits all together.
Okay, because I watched my five year old like bang his backpack down the bus stairs.
Right, so we obviously want to protect the equipment as well. Yes, yes, yeah.
A lot of the best practice on that is that K two not to take it home.
Okay.
But again, we're still working to define that.
Right.
But certainly access K twelve, we'll have it in the classroom. But K two, we have to look really closely at.
For the home, okay. And I, I keep hearing the conversation and, you know, Dr. Duran, I appreciate that we're talking about how often you guys will present to us. I'm less concerned about the number of times as I am about knowing, what are the measurements from the outset? Before, I, I realize that we don't know, but we have to start, I believe, with something, whether it be a, a survey to the teachers that says, how easy was it? How much did it increase your workload? But what was the benefit to you for the different populations, the students, the teachers? And the parents as well, you know? I think that one of the things I hear parents are frustrated with even about online textbooks is it's actually decreased access, I would, I would say. I can't, but as a parent of three elementary school, I feel like I have less access and that my kids have less access to the educational materials. Between three kids, you know, and trying to get on and all the codes for the textbooks and then the, the paperwork coming home and the worksheets aren't actually from the textbook that's online. So I, I just think it would be good to have, what are we measuring from the outset? What are the expectations for our different stakeholders? And then what was the outcome at the end of phase one? How is that going to change our practice, improve it? I think that would help us speak about it well.
Just, just so you know, I mean, we, we have contemplated that when we've begun that work. We don't have it finished. I actually was in a meeting with GMU faculty members and the dean less than two weeks ago where we were talking about possible partnerships with GMU to kind of commission an independent study and evaluation of our, of, of our phase one of this work. And so they're very interested possibly in working with us too, so that we could get an objective outside opinion. Whether or not we can close the loop on that, we don't know for sure, but all of those questions that you're raising are really important things for us to consider, both the quantitative outcomes and the qualitative experiences of kids and parents and teachers.
Thank you, I think I only have a few more things, I'm sorry. The other big unintended consequence I am worried about is, is handwriting and learning through handwriting. Because as much as we say, as much as we say that we'll ask, you know, well, this isn't going to be used for everything, our kids are writing less. Even with the limited technology have in their classrooms now, I, I imagine it's only going to become less. And how are we going to really address that concern? I mean, my kids are doing great work in writing biographies on Google Apps and it's excellent, but it's less and less handwriting, which is an educational concern. So as we're first focusing on learning and education, there are things we could possibly be losing as well and, and how we're going to, again, quantitatively account for that and consider that. And then this has also been asked, but we have some indication of cost for phase one. We've got to start somewhere, right? You have an initial set aside amount for buying, buying something in August. So what is, what is this in?
Once we pick the pyramid, we'll be able to figure out their, their inventory, what the gaps are in terms of what equipment we need. So that's why we don't have an exact amount yet because we need to, to work with those particular schools and take a look at what they exist, have existingly, what they exist, what their current inventory is, what we're going to have to supplement in terms of getting additional devices, what we can, again, it's not, it's not in stone yet. So that's part of what we're going to be doing over the next really several weeks, once we select that pyramid to get, get some exact amounts in terms of what we're going to order.
But some part of our budget has been set aside, I imagine?
We have some set aside in terms of some, that we, that we've, that we've held over for one time money, that we have, that we have put aside that we had planned on for this as part of our, you know, as part of the strategic planning, funding that we had put aside for this. So again, we don't know exactly how much we're going to have to spend on that. And so part of it also is in terms of looking at using our existing school based technology specialists. And so part of it also is in terms of looking at using our existing school-based technology specialists to help do some of the professional development. And so there's not just the equipment, but it's also some of the PD. So there's a variety of different pieces to this. So we'll probably know more in about a month in terms of exactly what we're gonna need to purchase versus reallocate.
And how much was set aside?
I believe within our replacement equipment funding. I'm kinda looking at Mary Beth as well.
I think it was, it was in the neighborhood of, of about $700,000, something like that. Again, and if we don't use it for that, then we will use it for refreshing more of our existing equipment, so.
Part of our replenishment.
Right.
Funding, and that's how we thought we could purchase the first part of the Phase One. And again, as Mary Beth alluded to, it depends on how many devices we're gonna have to purchase.
So depending on, so you're saying if you weren't to use it for that, you'd use it for?
Again, we.
Refurnishing current equipment, so?
Right.
Are we giving up refurbishing equipment for technology, for new technology?
In a sense, you can consider it refurbishing equipment.
Because you won't need to fix what we currently have.
Right, so it, I mean, it is, because we have existing equipment in place. Some of it's not gonna be current enough to be able to, to use it fully for what we wanna use it for. We may be able to move, if we replace some of the equipment at the high school level, we can move some of their carts down to the elementary level. I mean, it's sort of a, a moving parts, and we have to sort of get it all looking at in detail before we can figure out what we have to buy.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kofax, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you, oh, excuse me, thank you all. Most of my questions have been answered, but I would like to talk about just a few issues that I wanna add on in, in my concerns. Mr. Press expressed his concern about professional development for teachers and technology currently in the classroom not being used. I, I have experienced that as a parent. I have heard that from other people. I think that is, and we've talked about this, 'cause I know I've had this conversation, 'cause I referenced people in my, with the exception of Mary Beth. A lot of people in my age group and older in teachers, I find that those are the people, that's the age group, that is not willing or as comfortable with technology. And when you see some of the younger, you know, teachers, they embrace it fully and they understand it. But, you know, very similar things, and I think it is important that we don't roll out technology without the proper expectation for those teachers and that pyramid, whatever it's going to be. This is, this is what we wanna see, this is the improvements we want made, and we will help you learn. I share Ms. Hines' concern, as, as we all do, as we're coming up on looking at the teacher satisfaction surveys, about what can we possibly take off if we are going to add this? And we know that that's a diff, very difficult question to answer, we know that.
If I could just, one brief response. We, we are in the process of developing technology standards that would really say, this is how best practice for instructional use would look in terms of how you can actually use the technology to support the kinds of teaching practices that will lead to portrait of a graduate outcomes. So we've got a work team right now that is developing those standards for teachers. And it's very developmental in nature, recognizing that if you're a novice with using technology, these are the first steps that you can take to move your practice. Or if you're somewhere in the middle of the continuum, these are the next steps to take to even deepen your practice around how to do this effectively. So that's a big part of our work. And then, of course, testing those, those standards, aligning our supports and professional development to those standards with the schools in Phase One is a big piece of our professional learning work.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. The second thing is, yeah, I guess this is to Chairman Hines. I think I would have also appreciated an additional heads-up, a little star, that something is highlighted either in superintendent's or chair's notes. So, because I too missed that and was caught a little bit off guard by, you know, that's, that's just a comment for us, not you guys. So, and I guess also I, you know, the, and of course, I'm excited about making sure there is the equity of access. But you mentioned something that you didn't think these devices would be brought home in this first part of the phase out, is that correct?
For the younger.
K2.
K2.
We do expect at the high school level, it's, for sure, to be able to have them bring them home.
Okay.
That's part of what we wanna test.
Right.
We're just talking about the very youngest kids.
And so Ms. Loveglass, I'll, and I know you can answer it to this group, but I know we talked about this at the skip meeting. And, you know, there's, so we're gonna have this, and we're assuming, well, I'll make an assumption that it's in one of the pyramids that's more needy. And so what, what is missing then is that at, at-home access. So how are we going to figure out that piece? And I know it's federal, it's county, it's home access, or have we talked about that or, or considered that?
We certainly have talked about it a lot, and we, we did recently update our survey. So we do have it, and it still has, we have about 92% that do have internet access at home, and so that means 8% that do not.
Right.
And so we do continue to, we're working with the county again to try to see if we can get some additional partnerships. Part of the pyramid, the Phase One pilot is also to reiterate the available COCs and Comcast, Internet Essentials programs, which are very difficult. I mean, and some of these things, we're continuing to work at. One of the things that we hope, you know, some of these devices still have the ability to at least have some tools on them, that they can work without internet access, so they can do some things offline. So we continue to really wanna make sure they can do that in terms of a number of the different devices we have can, can do work offline. It's obviously much better and more engaging if they do have online access, but it's not an absolute requirement. And so we, again, working with our community in terms of being able to give them the maps of internet access points within their community that are available. We have those by pyramid that we update every year, in terms of access points throughout their community, public libraries, et cetera, that are available in their pyramid. You know, so we're continuing to, to work on this, but we don't have that solved. We don't wanna claim that we have that solved yet. It's, it's a, it's an international problem.
Right, and, and I do just wanna commend you for the, the process or the overall way you're, you're progressing. I, there was an article in the Washington Post a couple months ago, and it talked about the Organization for Economic Development, that cooper, that, that group from PISA. And it, it did say that basically, you know, they were talking about test results. And I'm glad we're not talking about it in, in terms like that. I'm glad we're talking about it in, in broader terms. Because right now, I think the data is still very unclear or it's not helpful. But I don't think that should be, and I'm glad that's not where, what we're after, is the end result. We're after more equity, more access, more availability to use this tool as another element in the toolbox of, of educational learning. So I think that's.
And as a means to help students develop portrait of a graduate outcomes.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, that's really the outcome that we're after here.
Absolutely, so, so I thank you for that, and I, I appreciate that, and I am anxious to hear the pyramid.
And just also what, picking back on what Ms. Hines said and what you're saying as well, I think it's important to know, this is only enhancing instructional strategies and instruction that we know works well and has worked well, but we went away from during the accountability era of No Child Left Behind. So this is an enhancement to some best practices and things, you know? So even when you spoke about some teachers who may not be as technologically savvy or willing to try, even though we're going to have technology standards, we're showing it in a way that it's not completely foreign. It's connected to a lot of the learnings that many of those teachers miss being able to do. Because many of the teachers you're talking about were a part of the educational system before No Child Left Behind, and were handcuffed for being able to do the things that they loved in terms of getting students to be collaborative, getting students to be critical thinkers. So when we can marry those two and show teachers on a scale via technology standards how you might infuse them, that's how we envision it being an enhancement and not letting people say, oh, this is something completely new, and if you don't know technology, you know, you might not wanna do this, or it's gonna be scary. We have to show how it all works as one and get people excited about being able to teach and not just be a robot and giving out information and expecting students to be one and give it back. So that is really what we're trying to also do while we think about equity, is getting people excited on all different levels. And that's where you're going to see some of those teachers who, yeah, maybe not be as technologically advanced, but have some strategies that maybe the newer teachers don't have, because they came up at a time when it was only during our accountability era, where they weren't taught some of those things. So how can you become partners in this learning? Or perhaps some of the newer teachers who have the technology can work with some of the teachers who have this strategies in their back pocket that they've been hiding or, or using when the door was closed and that kind of thing, and how can we work together? So we envision that being another community building and equity. Because it's not just equity for students, it's equity for teachers as well in terms of where they are on that spectrum and helping them share with one another once again.
That's absolutely true. I didn't even think about it as equity for the teachers, but that's a good point. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Am I the last one?
And then me.
And then you, okay. Okay, I, I guess at least eight of us, you know, from the prior board do remember that we spent a lot of time in developing strategic plan, working with the Dr. Garza and the community, that we spent, what, 18 months or something like that? And we had strategic plan goals, goal number one, being student success. We had a whole bunch of, you know, under that plan, we have a, we had a whole bunch of overarching strategies. And under each overarching strategy, we had desired outcomes, and we have actions and timeline. And if we need a refresher, I'm just trying to go to one of those desired outcome, which was posted up there, teacher, students, and parents who have access to contemporary and effective technology resources. And, and that had four different actions. And top two were, first one, create systematic strategies and standards for technology use by teachers and students to improve student engagement and learning. And this school year, 2015, 2016, we're supposed to have a plan. And then, I don't know from where, but we were supposed to start developing and the next year, implement. That was our agreed-upon timeline of actions. And the next action was, the second action I see on the list is achieving goal of one electronic device per student. Same thing, this year was supposed to be planning year, and then from next year, was developing and implementing. Are we on track to achieve those? Are we behind?
I, I think we, I think we are on track. Part of that discussion with the previous board was really trying to determine, what, what do we really mean by develop and implement, right? So I think with respect to both of those actions, we're in the development phase right now. So we're really ahead, slightly ahead of that timeline. But then the implement is the piece that we're going to be in for the 16, 17 school year with respect to the standards and respect to Phase One of this work. But then the nuance becomes, how long does it take to fully scale your implementation division-wide? And that's the part that when we had those previous conversations, we talked about, some of these things might be three years, some of them might be five years, some of them might be shorter, some of them might be longer.
Do you think that's gonna happen before I retire?
Well, I hope you're not retiring anytime soon, so I hope we've got a lot of time on this.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to hear your interpretation, staff's interpretation of the timeline. And when we talk about measures, measures, I saw that one of the monitoring metrics for the school board for that particular overarching strategy was, as far as this technology was concerned, let me go to this one. It is right here, I thought I saw it. It's a percentage of teachers effectively integrating technology into curriculum delivery as measured by the teacher evaluation process. Is that what you are doing?
That certainly was one of the metrics that we had adopted, and that's something that we need to look at. But I think our conversation here, when we've talked about student outcomes for this work, we really wanna be looking at portrait of a graduate outcome. So how are students developing those attributes of critical and creative thinking, problem-solving, communication, collaboration? We're really trying to privilege technology as a way to accelerate and to demonstrate student development of those portrait of a graduate skills. So there's gonna be a lot of metrics associated with this. Some will be quantitative and some will be qualitative.
Okay, what I'm trying to point out is this, as the prior board at least spent a lot of time working with not only the staff but the community to develop the strategic plan, whenever we have something that has to do with the strategic plan, we go back to what he, what the board agreed upon and doing it, and work from there. Thank you.
Dr. Duran, did you wanna say something? Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to work at this, maybe from the, the most macro level and then come down. Ms. Hines, I just wanna say I appreciate you trying to fall on your sword a little bit on this, but I honestly don't think it is at all reflection on you as chair. I, I'm gonna go with the, what I think was a clear expression of concern from Mr. McElveen. Putting this into an infogram in February, where it actually says you're looking for two pyramids, not one. And as board members, you all know the volume of emails and things we get. I can't read every infogram and dig through it and see if there might be something that's board-level? This is board-level. And, and the first time in Dr. Garza's tenure in three years, I gotta tell you, this one really upsets me a lot. Because this is a big deal. Dr. Duran just said, this isn't a pilot, this is a phase-in. We are talking about repurposing funds. And it was stated earlier that if we were to go one-to-one for the whole district, 24 pyramids, that'd be $63 million. Okay, so then you're talking about a one-pyramid phase-in. That, we heard, might be $700,000, but yet if you do the math, it could be $2.5 million. Maybe that's upfront costs, and it's $700,000 for, for the repairs and, and techno, technology support. I don't know. But I guess what I'm trying to ask my colleagues, because honestly, we own this in the end, I don't feel that we are being responsible by just saying, thanks for the really interesting presentation, go for it. We, we are supposed to be partnering with the superintendent. This is a big deal, and we can't make a mistake with it. We've got Baltimore County that's two years into it, we've got Henrico that's 10 years into it. But we don't have a single white paper, we don't have a single framework or a design on this thing other than a PowerPoint, which, as I shared with the staff during the manager's presentation, you know, really appreciate that you did some revisions, but you guys, you should've seen it before we did the revisions. It's lofty language, it's very pretty, it's what you would present, quite frankly, to the community. We're not the community. And I, I watched my colleagues on the audit committee get heartburn over $132,000 over five years for software. This is repurposing of funds. What funds? How much? My brain went already to a couple million dollars. And, you know, I appreciate, you know, then Ms. Loveglass trying to give some context. So $700,000 isn't gonna cause me to, you know, lose sleep necessarily on something that we, as Mr. Moon talked about, have in our strategic plan. But honestly, you guys, if you've listened to some of our colleagues around the table in this work session that's now taken two hours, we don't have a framework. We don't have an implementation plan. We don't have costs. We don't have what the professional development and training is actually going to look like. We don't have listed out for us, what did staff learn in less, in their lessons learned from Henrico, from Baltimore County? We have a few smatterings, but I guess I wanna believe that before Dr. Garza Green lit this thing, that you guys had to give her something more than a few PowerPoint slides. But I don't feel at all comfortable with this. And I'm really disappointed, again, that two months ago, we sent something out asking for pyramids to apply, and this board wasn't even part of the conversation. We're getting this two months later. It's like, hey, the race already started, I guess we'll just catch you up to speed. And we're off and running. So my ask to my colleagues quite honestly is, we have a work session in three weeks. And, you know, I would like Dr. Lockard, since Dr. Garza's not here, to maybe weigh in on this, and then Chairman Hines. But it's my proposal as a next step, that staff, if it's reasonable, you guys come back in three weeks with a lot of answers to the very thoughtful questions that our colleagues have asked, and enable us to actually be able to stand with you on this. Because I think we, quite frankly, are gonna be risking our own governance and stewardship credibility just saying, whatever, sounds good. I, I just don't think that's the expectation of the community, it's not the expectation of the board supervisors, and it's not the expectation to have for us. And so that's me trying to be at the. And so that's me trying to be at the most high level with my remarks, but at minimum, you guys, I can't believe you just wanted to sit there and say, whatever, without some sort of formalized framework with the three buckets we talked about. So Chairman Hines, I don't know if you want to tackle this first or Dr. Lockard, but I need to...
Well, a couple of things. Really, those comments are for the superintendent, unfortunately, she's not here, okay? And I think it's fair, we have chairs meeting on Wednesday. And also, I'll push back a little bit, I don't feel like I'm saying, whatever. I think that misinterprets my response to this presentation. But we all may have different opinions about that.
Well, I apologize. I just meant whether we're just sort of like, very cool, move on, or are we going to set some parameters on what's happening from today?
Well, okay. And I mean, I do think there may be some differences of opinion around the table about how much this is staff work and how much this is board work. I'm personally a little bit worried that we're going below where we're supposed to be, but I could be wrong, that could be my opinion. So we'll talk about it in chairs on Wednesday morning with the superintendent, if that helps, and then come back to the board. And, you know, our work sessions are pretty jammed up. But, you know, I mean, we can get a sense of the board here, if there's a feeling that we need to come back to a work session, we'll talk about it.
Well, I do want to clarify the reason I'm making the request. We don't know what this is going to cost. And what's been stated by staff is, we're going to repurpose funding. That is board responsibility. We own our operating budget. And so I agree with you, you don't, I don't want to get down in the weeds and say, oh, tell me how you're going to completely roll this thing out to the nitty gritty. But in all fairness, Ms. Hines, we don't have a framework here at all. So now I see the hands going up. So Ms. Kofax and then Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Well, Ms. McLoughlin, I am going to disagree with you a bit. I, so there's two different issues here. The issue was the information for the pilot program. I agree with you that I don't think, or the phase in, I agree that it wasn't presented in the best possible light because some of us obviously missed it. So that's one thing. But the second part is that this is part of our strategic plan. The one-to-one technology initiative is what we agreed to. And I do, and I think that's where Ms. Hines was going there, and there may need to be further discussion amongst the board. Where do you think board, you know, where does the board tap into some of these new initiatives? And at this point, I think what the staff is bringing to us is not something that is surprising to us or that we have not asked for. And everything that the staff brings to us has a cost attached to it. And that's, you know, we don't know, we, I mean, you know, we know when you do the line-by-line budget, it's about this thick, and not every one of those dollars committed to memory. So that's where I'll push back with you. I think there's two different topics here, and I do think for the presentation that was presented today, it's very much in line with the go-ahead we gave to the staff for the strategic plan, where they are and where they're going to be. I do think, you know, it's, we do need to know costs attached, and we're not quite there yet. And so, but I think it's important that the board does understand that, particularly if this rollout initiative gets to be much more costlier than that kind of ballpark figure that you gave.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I do believe that we need a little bit more flesh on the bones of this proposal that you've put forth. I think that we all recognize the need to look more closely at the importance of technology as an enabler to our educational experience. But I will suggest that what we should be asking from staff is a bit more of a business plan for this, that says, this is the goal, we have a strategic plan that says that we want one-to-one computing. The strategic plan has linked that to our portrait of a graduate. Our plan would be to initially roll it out in a bifurcated manner in which we would test in a pyramid-centric approach of a single pyramid. And our expectation is that at the most, it will cost $700,000. Recognizing we're taking the $700,000 and reallocating it, this board does need to know where the reallocation is coming from because it's, you've suggested that it is coming from not purchasing equipment elsewhere. Well, where, what schools are impacted by not having replacement equipment rolled out to them? And so it's not that we want to micromanage as much as we need to have an impact assessment that says, what's the cost of doing it? What's the cost of not doing it for our educators? And when we look at our costs, look at it not only in dollars and cents, but also look at it on demands for our teachers and to follow up on what Chairman Hines has stated, the importance of what are we taking off the table for those teachers that are signing up for this pyramid-centric approach? And so it's not, it's, we have a lot of faith in what you all do, but for us to fully support you, but also to be effective advocates in the community, we do need to know a bit more because it creates a vulnerability for the school system, it creates a vulnerability for the school board. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
First of all, this actually came to light on February 18th.
Ms. Strauss, I know, I do want to clarify.
Sure.
Announcing that they were taking applications for the pilot pyramid, however they've worded it, is not the same as providing information about the plan and the program. Let's just be clear.
I understand. Okay. My one suggestion is, first of all, I still contend this is really very exciting, and the instructional approach makes great sense. There is no additional staffing needed, there is rearrangement of some of the technology, and it may end up costing even less rearrangement, depending on what school you choose. I would perhaps suggest that you all come back to us this summer with an update on where you are so far. I think that, and you've heard people would like to know a little bit more about how this is going to be evaluated, but I think this summer, there will be much more information as to how the rollout is. And I rather agree, this was part of our strategic plan. And certainly, the hope was that you would go forward, beginning to implement some of the more meaty parts of the, of Ignite, and this is certainly one of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans?
So I hear a lot of good questions being raised about this. I guess my suggestion would be to, and thank you, Karen, for putting yours in writing. There were a lot that you had outlined before. So I guess my suggestion would be to get written answers to these questions and send that out to board members, and then at that point, see if we want to follow up with another work session. And if board members feel we do need another work session, then we could do it at that point. It may be that the questions are answered or they may not be.
That's a very good suggestion, Ms. Evans, I appreciate that. Ms. Schultz and then Mr. Wilson.
Can I be so bold as to say, I think that possibly, this could have potentially been a very different conversation had Dr. Garza been here. And frankly, I'm not exactly sure that we're going to get to a next step in her absence, and I almost don't even think that it's fair. I think there's a lot of well-deserved consternation around this table and how things were communicated to this board, the amount of money that we're talking about, the alignment with the strategic plan. I think that we can't have a productive conversation on what to do next in Dr. Garza's absence. So, Ms. Hines, I think that we just sort of need to effectively table this conversation and allow you to have the conversation and acknowledge the fact that Dr. Garza's, you know, not here and that there be a discussion in chairmans about potentially next steps and how we move this thing forward.
Sure. I think, you know, we do have to be able to function without her here. She is allowed to have a fever and a cough and not come to work, right? So, but I hear you.
I give her that credit.
Right. And I think, I mean, I think I like, you know, Sandy's suggestion, we go ahead and get answers to the questions that we have put on the table right now, and we'll take this next, what will the next step be, we'll take to chairs on Wednesday morning, and hopefully Karen will feel better by then.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. I think that there, that maybe we need to separate the issues a little bit. There's an issue of board notice, and then there's another issue of funding. And then there's an issue of the, our school system and the pyramids being laboratories for innovation. And I think that we don't want to, we don't want to sort of confuse those two to stifle the innovation that I think we have to have as a school system to move forward. And so I guess in general, I think that this is not only important, I think it's necessary. I mean, we've had a series of kind of patchwork changes, technology-wise, within our school system. It is time to have a more comprehensive discussion and thought process about how we were going to adapt the learning models within our schools with education. Having said that, in addition to being surprised, I think that, I think that there's an issue with the community maybe having a little bit of whiplash. Because up until about a week ago, we were talking about, you know, very serious budget matters, including, you know, fourth grade strings. And this is a program that whether, however you want to say reallocation, it sounds like it was a plan to spend funds that were in addition. And I think it's, I think it's just a little bit of a, we just need to be more careful, I think, in terms of presentation. And I think that if we can wring out $700,000 out of a tight budget to do an innovative program, I think it is, it needs to be, the budget needs to be presented that way to the budget or to the community, because I think that that's the kind of change that I think raises people's eyebrows, even though I think I would support this program. I mean, I think that it's necessary, but I do think that we've got to be careful.
So I appreciate everybody's additional input. Ms. Hines, I mean, based on my discomfort level, and again, just to clarify, it's not about micromanaging. I don't want anybody to think that's what I think should happen here. I think Ms. Corbett Sanders absolutely captured where I would be far more comfortable as a board member. So as long as her, you know, framework is being answered, I think that at least enables us to get some much-needed detail and information, and I think it is the responsibility of this board. You can absolutely promote innovation, but if you don't have a framework and you don't understand what the creative idea is, a teacher would fail a student coming up with just an idea and no execution plan. And so we should hold that responsibility as board members to know what the execution plan is before we just say, this sounds really exciting, but we have no idea how we're going to get there with it. So, Mr. Moon, you signaled that you wanted to say something, but, so I'll just finish so you get the last word, Mr. Moon. Ms. Hines, I'm comfortable with that, but I guess I would just like to at least leave it that as we get this information, we can also communicate to you and Ms. Evans if we really are still uncomfortable and feel like we need to have an opportunity with Dr. Garza together.
You know, one suggestion that I could make for chairman and superintendent to consider at the upcoming chairman's meeting is, you know, considering the level of interest on the part of board members in knowing perhaps which pyramid is going to be ultimately selected for this and how much this is going to cost, you know, if they can bring it as an action item for board to, board to actually approve it at the regular meeting.
So, I'm sorry, approving what then specifically? The money or...
Money, both money, both money and then selection of the pyramid.
I don't know, let's talk about that.
Just to be clear, we're not repurposing funds. These are funds that are already targeted towards equipment purchase. It's just a matter of which equipment we're going, looking at purchasing. So it's not a reallocation of funds. I just want to be clear on that.
And that is, that is, I suggest that for the chairman's consideration at the chairman's meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Ms., Chairman Hines, I am now going to turn over the remainder of the work session first to Ms. Kofax and Jeannie Strauss, our budget chair, and then it will be then taken over by Mr. Moon for governance.
Do we need next steps or...
I'm sorry, I thought we did our next steps unless there's, did you tie, okay. I thought the next steps was answer all the questions.
I thought we were there to answer the questions and then...
Yep. So again, just to refresh everybody's memory on this one, if there are questions that you didn't, you know, yet capture up here, please email the full board and submit them All right. Does anybody have any questions about the next steps that are listed up here? Okay.
So are we capturing that we're going to discuss after these, discuss next steps at chairman's and bring that back to the board?
Oh, I think we have to delete mine. Staff to come back for a follow-up presentation, you can delete that. And you can make that one discuss at chairman's.
Can we improve maybe the handwriting one? I don't, I don't know that it's the impact of losing handwriting instruction. Yet what is happening with handwriting instruction? Is it, is it being, I mean, you know, some narrative around that? You know, if they could provide us the feedback, is it a cost? Is it happening? To what extent?
I don't know if this fully captures it, but maybe to more explicitly explain the role of handwriting instruction in the FCPS program of studies.
And potential, potential consequences of the one-to-one technology in relation to that.
Yeah.
And then also the question above it, what are measurements from the beginning for different populations? I guess from different, from the different stakeholders, I don't know if it's, just want to make clear, not the population as a whole, but teachers.
Yeah, I think our, I think our conversation really centered on what are, what are the metrics that we're going to use to evaluate the success of this work and considering the multiple stakeholder points of view in that.
Correct. Both qualitative and quantitative.
Yeah.
Great.
That would be substituting the current number four from the bottom. What are the measurements from the beginning? Yep, that would be substituting that one.
All right, how long do we need for the transition? Two minutes? Okay, board members, if you feel you've got to scoot out of here, you've got two minutes before we start with Ms. Strauss.